Good evening and welcome. I'm Karen Davis, and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Glendora, we welcome you here tonight. Joining me is Councilmember Gary Boyer. And we are happy to be here tonight to celebrate with you the many fine recognitions that we will be passing out this evening. Our citizens are our greatest resource in the community, so we appreciate these quarterly opportunities to come together and recognize our citizens for the many wonderful things you do to make Glendora the great place that it is. Tonight, our Community Services Commission members usually are joining us, but they're having a meeting tonight, so they will not be with us. But we'll be going right into our Community Beautification Awards. And we celebrate the many ways in which residents give time, effort, resources to beautify and make their homes and businesses the great places that they are. Those awards are chosen by members of a beautification nomination panel to recognize the residential and commercial properties in areas of landscaping, renovation, and overall appearance. The panel members are asked to submit nominations for properties which they believe fit the criteria of being well-maintained and thus demonstrating pride in their neighborhood. Also, residents can submit nominations as well. And we'd like to thank the members of that committee that do this hard work tonight. Three of the four of them are here. Joe Bataglia.[108.61][108.61](applause) Matthew Bartlett.[113.14][113.14](applause) Dan Collins, and also his two fine assistants over there.[120.14][120.14](applause) And not able to be with us tonight is the fourth member of that, Jack Avanella. So, thank you very much, gentlemen, for your hard work and going out and helping us recognize these wonderful folks for all of their hard work. We have a great PowerPoint that will be highlighting those properties as I read off the names. So, as I read your name, if you could please come forward, we have a certificate for you. And you also have this beautiful sign that you can display in your window, in your front yard, to let your neighbors know that you've been recognized for your hard work. So, we'll begin with our first awardee, the Corber residence on Heber Street. Very nice.[163.47][163.47](applause)[164.47][164.47](laughter) The Higgins residence, also on Heber Street.[181.43][181.43](applause) The Yao residence on Walden Avenue.[208.12][208.12](applause) She said, "A lot of blood, sweat, and tears" into making that happen, so thank you.[225.48][225.48](applause) The Saporin residence on Vista Benita.[233.37][233.37](applause) And it looks like you have begun doing some drought-tolerant work there, so thank you very much.[246.23][246.23](laughter) Thank you very much. Thank you. To this day, it's been really great that all my neighbors and friends have helped me, and thank you very much. Thank you very much.[257.23][257.23](applause) And the Mitzkiss residence on Minnesota Avenue.[263.81][263.81](applause) The Brown residence on Ada Avenue.[273.52][273.52](applause) The Dilly residence on Locke Levin.[294.83][294.83](applause) The Lewis residence on Vista Benita.[345.72][345.72](applause) The Palmerance residence on North Ridge.[354.02][354.02](applause) The Ortiz residence on Locke Levin.[369.81][369.81](applause) And the Somas residence on Locke Levin, and I believe accepting for them tonight will be Mike Beckman. Oh, alright, the Somas residents are here. Very good. The Gilfillan residence on Donnington.[403.28][403.28](applause) The Spear residence on Donnington.[413.47][413.47](applause) I just want to say that my dad has been, or has been, a proud resident of Glendora for over 45 years, and he passed away in January. He would have loved to see this, so I speak on his behalf, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.[436.63][436.63](applause) The Rec residence on Trayer Avenue.[444.47][444.47](applause) And the Schmidt Wyman's residence on Valencia Street.[454.25][454.25](applause) Okay, and this one, I'm sure it's Mrs. Norman that does all of the work. The Norman residence on Valencia Street.[504.00][504.00](applause)
On behalf of everybody, we thank you a lot. Some of you might recall, in 1968, there was a terrible fire in August, and then the rains came in January, 40 inches of it. And in our backyard, you could step off the mud pile onto the roof. And we had 33,000 gallons of mud in the backyard. So, it's a wonderful town to live in, and thank you very much for the award.[542.82][542.82](laughter)
Well, those are all of our beautification winners, so again, thank you to all of you for all that you've done to add such beauty to our city, and thank you to our panel for your work in selecting them.[560.75][560.75](applause) Tonight, we will be celebrating and recognizing some of our Eagle Scouts and the projects that they have done in Glendora. They put a lot of time and effort, not only into earning that rank of Eagle, but also in the time, effort, sweat, blood, and tears they put into those projects. They do quite a bit for our community in maintaining our trails, building walls, doing a variety of projects. So, tonight, it is our pleasure to be able to recognize them for their labor and their commitment to this task. Under the direction of our Community Services Department, and then members of our Glendora Trails Council, Mr. Dick Sweeney and Mr. Gordon Rowley, they worked together in creating these projects. So, tonight, our first representative, Seth Castro, from Troop 373. The project was Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Seth's team worked on widening and reinforcing two portions of the Colter Pine Trail in the Dunn Canyon area, which are very narrow and always subject to erosion damage. A great deal of hard labor went into this project, as Seth and his team had to dig a big trench, carry heavy rocks that were collected from the canyon bottom, and work to build this. So, I invite Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Rowley to come forward and accept on behalf of Seth.[651.66][651.66](applause)
Well, I understand there's a couple of the Eagle Scouts tonight that weren't able to make it. That's too bad, because they do a great job. And so, we're happy to accept these on behalf of those who aren't able to make it tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Caleb DeVoe from Troop 373. His project was also in Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Caleb's Eagle project was to help widen a 200-yard segment of Colter Pine Trail. This entailed a great deal of dirt removal by the scout team that had to dig down four feet to the trail path below to level out the trail. Their hard work created one and a half foot width increase of the current trail, making the area much easier to maintain. Thank you very much on behalf of them. Our next recipient is Michael Duchetta from Troop 486. Again, another project in Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Michael's Eagle project was to help construct a 20-foot rock wall at a portion of the city day camp parking area to prevent off-road vehicles from driving through the natural vegetation along the dirt-surface parking lot. And I've seen that wall, and it does accomplish that task. His team gathered rocks from the canyon bottom to use at the wall site. His team chose to donate the cement used in this project. So, Michael, thank you very much. Are you here this evening?[765.82][765.82](applause) Okay, our next recipient, Tim Ebner from Troop 491. Another project at Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Tim chose the Ren Meacham Trail area where he and his team cleared the brush to a two-foot width, prepared a six-foot level pathway, and provided trail maintenance to the southern one-half-mile portion. So, thank you very much to Tim and his team, and as Tim or anyone from his family here tonight. No, okay, Mr. Sweeney.[806.73][806.73](applause) Michael Heim from Troop 491. Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Michael and his scout team chose to widen an area of the Colter Pine Trail about 300 yards long from Paul Kaiser Trail in the north to Dunn Canyon Trail junction to the southwest. This required removal of a one-foot-thick surface along 25 feet of cliff-rock structure. So, a lot of labor, and thank you.[844.63][844.63](applause) Our next recipient is Graham Lance from Troop 483. Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Graham and members of his team completed construction at the southern end of an existing rock wall surrounding the parking lot for the city day camp. This segment will help protect the area from off-road vehicle activity and further erosion. Graham.[880.86][880.86](applause) I'd like to thank Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Beidke, and Mr. Rowley. I couldn't have done it without them. Our next recipient is John Marsh from Troop 483, also at Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. John and his team chose to repair, clean, and rebuild parts of the Kaiser Trail east end. This required quite a bit of dirt and debris removal from the trail and reconstructing it to acceptable trail standards, which all of us who travel on those trails appreciate tremendously. So, it's John here this evening. Mr. Rowley, come forward this time. Okay. And our next recipient is Josh Wood from Troop 483. Big Dalton Canyon Wilderness Park. Josh chose to work on the 45-foot extension of rock wall just south of the day camp gate. This wall furnished two additional parking spaces and greatly aided to stopping the Well, thank you again to both of you gentlemen for your leadership and guidance in helping these scouts make this possible, and our many thanks to all of the Eagle Scouts and their parents, their leaders, and all who were on their teams to make all of these projects a reality. We appreciate the contributions to the city and all of the time, effort, and labor. So, again, thank you to all of them.[996.63][996.63](applause) At this time, we will be honoring our military who have finished their tour of duty, and so at this time, I'd like to invite the representatives from our project, Glendora Yellow Ribbon, to come forward and recognize our military men and women who have finished their tour of duty. And as they're making their way forward, I invite all of you that are able to please stand as together we say thank you to our men and women in service and enabling us to be here tonight in freedom to take this time together.[1029.35][1029.35](applause)
Well, good evening, everyone. I thank you all for being here tonight. I wanted to start out by thanking the city for taking the time and recognizing all the members of our community who do excel and go the extra mile in making our world a better place to live. Speaking of Glendora, I'm pretty sure that everyone living in Glendora has noticed one or two of our military banners hanging throughout the community. Well, that's us, PGYR, myself, Kathleen, Emmy, Pam, and Kath Howarth in the back. Debbie, who couldn't be here tonight, are on the committee that we support and raise funds to get these banners put up. And we've had the honor of proudly displaying over 500 military banners over the past 12 years the program has been in existence. And I know at this point, if any of you have had the opportunity to come to one of these recognitions before, typically, one of us from PGYR will stand up here and tell you the who, what, when, where, and how PGYR was started, and what it's all about, and how it continues today, et cetera. However, since I'm more of a visual person rather than an audio person, I felt it would be a lot more personable showing you the why of what we do. This, too, is the main reason this program continues today, and therefore, thanks to the aid of my son Billy, who put this video together for us, I have only one more thing I would like to express, and before Emmy has the honors of calling out our military recipients.
There were several soldiers in that slideshow that are not with us anymore. Could we just stand and give them a moment of silence?[1421.75][1421.75](sighs) Thank you. You may be seated.[1444.75][1444.75](sighs) And as we take a moment to recognize those who have fallen, we are also here to honor those who have come home. At this time, we'd like to recognize our heroes who are back with us or somewhere stateside where we can honor them and thank them, and someone may be here on their behalf to accept. As I call your name, we encourage you to please come to the podium, share with us something about your journey. Tell us how it feels to be home and what the support felt like to you. We admire you and we honor you.
Thank you very much. It's just nice to be recognized.
Please forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Mariah Beers, United States Army. Can we give them a hand?[1524.01][1524.01](applause) Lucas Cohn, United States Marine Corps.[1535.42][1535.42](applause) Handing his banner is his mom, Pam.[1539.53][1539.53](applause)
I don't need a handshake for you.[1546.32][1546.32](laughter)
That's his mom.[1548.42][1548.42](laughter)
Just thanks for supporting the military.[1552.42][1552.42](applause)
Jonathan Kotick, United States Navy.[1563.97][1563.97](applause)
I would just like to thank all my friends and family in the first two rows here. Without them and without the Yellow Ribbon program, I would feel lost, so thank you.[1583.53][1583.53](applause)
Johnny F. Goodlow, United States Army.[1594.38][1594.38](applause)
I just want to thank my family, friends, friends that I met over the eight states. I actually just traveled from New York City to California in three days, so I'm glad to be at this event. I'm glad to support, you know, be actually here. I spent nine months in Afghanistan, a long time, 2013, took out most of my 2014 year. Barely got to see family, but I'm -- the opportunity that I got to come back, you know, and I'm actually here now, sharing my thought, spending as much time as I can with them, and just going on with a better future. And I just, like I said, I just want to thank everybody that served, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard, doesn't matter. You're in my heart. We're all brothers in the same way. That's all I got, so.
We'll take it. Just glad to hear your voice. And lastly tonight, Peter Sedrick, United States Navy.[1699.23][1699.23](applause) Those who cannot be with us tonight, PGYR will ensure that the banners are delivered to the family on their behalf. We thank you for your support, your prayers. If there's any gifts or talents that you have that you feel you could bring to our committee, we certainly welcome you. Please see one of us at the back of the room tonight. Thank you, and welcome home to all our service members.[1727.28][1727.28](applause)
Again, a big thank you to the Yellow Ribbon Committee for all of their work that they do. They are out there supporting our military in a variety of ways, in addition to the banners, raising funds, and putting together special events. So, thank you to your committee for all that you do.[1751.32][1751.32](applause) And again, thank you to our men and women in service. Those of you that have returned home, thank you very much for your service, and let us continue to remember those who are still out there protecting and defending us. Let us remember them in our thoughts and prayers. This concludes our program tonight. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for your contributions to the community. Drive safe. God bless you, and take care.[1778.65][1778.65](applause)[1779.65][1779.65](music) Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.